Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectment meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at the time being 6:30 PM. We're holding our meeting this evening in the Harry Butter Selectments Chambers here at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood. This meeting is also being broadcast by Norwood Community Media for future broadcasts. As is our tradition, we will start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a relatively light agenda. We will have our normal approvals of warrants and meeting minutes. We have just a couple of appointments this evening. And under new business, we have a variety of permits and other requirements that, other requests that need our approval. And we do have some memorandum to review and approve as well. So our first appointment is coming up at 6:35, which is just a couple of minutes away. So in the interim, I'm going to go through the first couple of agenda items for review and approval by the board. The first item is, number one, warrant signature update. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned and approved. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? And the second item, number two, is meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes for June 11th, 2024. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous as well. Let's do one more item before we head into our first appointment of the evening. I will start with 4.3. One-day liquor permits. Castle Island Brewery submitting a request for one-day liquor permits for beer gardens to be held during the Wednesday evening Summer Fest concerts, as well as the Sunday's concerts on the Common. They have submitted a permit for July 10th, 17th, 24th, 28th, and 31st, as well as August the 4th, 7th, 11th, 14th, 21st, and 25th. And just by way of refreshing everyone's memory, Castle Island had their beer garden established during several concerts last summer, and the concert committee certainly is looking forward to welcoming them back. But at this point, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Unanimous. At this point, it's very nearly 6:35, and we will proceed to our first appointment of the evening. Dr. Harper, good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
You may take a seat at the table so people can hear you better. Thank you for coming in this evening. The board will recall that Dr. Harper was appointed by the board at our last meeting as our newest airport commissioner, replacing long-term-serving Commissioner Mark Ryan. And we had certainly had your resume, and several of us, some of us have had opportunity to have a good sit-down with you, Dr. Harper. And I don't know if I should call you Dr. Harper or Lieutenant Colonel Harper. Probably want to be called Nick.
Claire's joy.
So thank you for coming in. You've been voted in, so we congratulate you for being appointed to the commission. At this point in time, if there's anything you want to add about, tell us a little bit about yourself in terms of your interest in the airport and a little bit about your background, you're welcome to do so.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, first off, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you all for the faith that you had in me and everything. I look forward to working with the Airport Commission. My background actually is, as one of the other titles I had, Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force. And as a commander in the Air Force, I was responsible for air traffic control, airport maintenance and management, as well as all the communications on base. So I've had some experience with that. Dealt with noise complaints, dealt with runway intrusions and everything else. So I don't think I'll see anything new or different here, so. I am new to Norwood. What got me here was my son and my granddaughter and his wife in Boston. So my wife and I had lived overseas for almost 20 years. So we had to come back to somewhere, so we thought we'd come back and bother them and help them raise our granddaughter. So we got here to Norwood about two and a half years ago. So again, looking forward to being part of the community, and again, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Norwood as well. So at this point, I'll open up for any comments, questions from the board members. I'll start with Ms. Grow first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Well, we just wanted to extend a welcome to the community in general. Very appreciative of the work you'll be doing as Commissioner, and your resume pretty much speaks for itself, you know, the wealth of experience that you have in very applicable places. But any questions that you have or anything you need in terms of continuing to familiarize yourself with Norwood, with anything you need, just let us know. We're happy to be of help.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Sad.
I want to welcome you to know you've got a great board down there, and hopefully you'll work well with them. I've noticed in Norman, Oklahoma.
Yeah.
You ever frequent Eskimo Joe's?
Yes.
Friend of mine owns that.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Nice place.
And yeah, I was president of Massachusetts J.C.'s, and our headquarters is in Oklahoma. So there were some nice guys that I'd met out there and became good friends with them. Other than that, I thank you for coming aboard. Norwood's a great town. You're going to love it. And as Helen says, it's the crown jewel of Commonwealth. It's good to see a lot of people stepping forward. We want more people stepping forward, Mr. Chairman. Of any projects and any committees we can get them on, the more the better. You know, our slogan was, "Come grow with us." So welcome to Norwood, and I thank you for putting your time and energy with this issue down there at the Norwood Airport and that great group down there.
Good.
So welcome to Norwood. That's it.
So I know that you've just recently been appointed. You've had an opportunity to meet the other two commissioners, but I don't believe we had a commission meeting yet for you to attend to.
No.
I think that's probably coming up soon.
Yeah.
And hopefully you had the opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Raymond, the airport manager, to kind of like get a physical tour of the airport as well. So again, I welcome you, and I want to thank you for stepping to the plate and serving your community. You have service written all over your resume, so it's not surprising that you've chosen to be of service to us as well. Thank you very much, Dr. Harper, and good luck.
Thanks.
You are free to leave. How about that? You have no need, you're welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting, but...
I'll leave. You guys do it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Great to meet you.
Was Mr. Raymond going to contact him?
Yeah. All right, now returning to our agenda. We still have some time before our first, our second appointment of the evening, up to that 7:00 PM. So we'll go to new business. So we have before us a couple of items for new business associated with the closing out of fiscal year '24, a couple of items that we need to do in order to allow the accounting department to appropriately close out the fiscal year '24 account and general ledger, et cetera, et cetera. The first one is 4.1, Norwood-like department year-end close. This is an annual request, annual approval that we have. As board members will recall, we do include in our annual budget funds from the electric department that are transferred into the general fund. This transfer needs to be effective this evening. You have the information from our electric department, as well as our information from our Director of Finance and Accounting. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
I will make a motion to transfer $6 million from the Electric Fund 0004 to the Town's General Fund.
Second.
It's, motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous, so that's item number one for year-end closeout. The second item is municipal year-end closeout. We have the memorandum from Mr. Mizuko, I'm sorry, from Mr. O'Neill, our Director of Finance and Accounting. Mr. Rosen, I understand, I believe that the FinCom has been briefed in this, and they're scheduled to vote for this as well. This is another item associated with the closing of our fiscal '24 year, municipal transfers. We have, let me just read them off here. So we have a total of, we have transfers associated with Finance Commission, Elections, Treasurer, Regional Schools, and Waste Removal Expenses. The department, departments that are, these accounts reside in has been identified for us. The proposed amount of money for municipal transfers has been recorded here. In total, there are a total of $628,415 to transfer from one accounts to the other. This is not, this is not a, this does not mean that we are over budgeted. These are just accounts that are specific deficit accounts where departments are, have overages, and they're now asking for that overage money to be moved into those deficit accounts so the budget can be balanced for fiscal year '24. Did I have that right, Mr. Rosen?
Very right, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. So with that, any questions, comments, or does the board feel comfortable making a motion at this time?
No questions.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Do we need account numbers for this transfer?
We do not.
Oh.
No, we do not. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, this we do not. We typically just take the data sheet that Finance gives us, and they have identified the budget category specifically, and then they'll identify the specific account numbers. It's a long-winded answer to say we don't need them.
Motion to approve?
And Ms. Grow, seconds. Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed? The vote is three, nothing to the transfers as identified by Mr. O'Neill. Moving on, we have a one-day liquor permit. This is four-point, item 4.4. One-day liquor permit for Hometown Arcade. Submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit for a Jaws pinball launch at Hometown Arcade, 61 Entecott Street on Saturday, July 20th, 2024, from 2:00 PM until 6:00 PM, with approximately 75 guests expected.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? And the next item is 4.5. Also, a one-day liquor permit from Hometown Arcade. Submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit for Lucy's celebration at Hometown Arcade, 61 Entecott Street on Saturday, July 20th, 2024, from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM, with approximately 50 guests expected. Pleasure of the board?
Correction, that one's for 70 to 80 guests?
I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm looking at, this is 4.5?
4.5.
Oh, I'm sorry.
50 guests. Yeah.
I got ahead of myself.
It's okay.
So I'm the one who's... Motion to approve.
All right. Mr. Sad?
On the motion, quick question. I wonder, is it, I guess not proper to make sure these people are old enough to have a party for liquor license? But I make a motion, I like second a motion.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they will have to, they would have to comply with that requirement as well. So the, this has been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? And of course, we do wish Lucy a happy birthday on July the 20th. 4.6. It's a one-day liquor permit for Hometown Arcade. Submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit for a Massachusetts Women Over 50 event at Hometown Arcade, 61 Entecott Street on Friday, August the 16th, 2024, from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM, with approximately 70 to 80 guests expected. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? I don't know if they need to worry about the ID that evening, huh?
No, I'm thinking of going myself.
And now we're on to 4.7. Town Common Use. This is the, from Norwood Community Media. Norwood Community Media submitting a request to use the Town Common on Tuesday, September 24th, from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM, for a special live broadcast celebrating their 20th anniversary. It is noted that they purposely chose a Tuesday in order to promote and highlight the farmer's market. A rain date of Tuesday, October the 1st, has also been requested, so...
Motion to approve with gratitude.
Second.
Motion to approve with gratitude, seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And happy anniversary to Norwood Community Media. That passes three, zero. The next request is 4.8. Morse House Request. Norwood Community Garden submitting a request to use the Morse House on Friday, July 19th, 2024, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM, for an ice cream social, with approximately 40 guests expected.
Question to approve?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Three, nothing, carried. 4.9. This too is a Morse House request. The Norwood Historical Commission submitting a request to use the Morse House on Thursday, August the 8th, 2024, from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM, for an open house that will coincide with the Morrel Library pop-up library event. This request includes an outside sandwich board display that will advertise the event from July 30th through August the 8th. Pleasure of the board? Mr. Sad?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Three, nothing, carried. All right. Now on item number 4.10, 4.10. Block Party Request, Victoria Circle. Submitting an annual request to hold a block party on Saturday, September the 21st, 2024, from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM, at Victoria Circle. The streets requested to block off are the following: Churchill Drive, Victoria Circle, Downing Street, and Avon Street.
A question on the language on that one, and similar to the one after it. When it says submitting annual request, that says in to remind us that we have approved such things in the past, as opposed to saying we're approving them in perpetuity every year to always be able to do that, correct?
We did it last year, well.
Yeah. Annual is, and we have this event every year.
Yeah, okay.
Good clarification.
Then a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. It's been motioned and seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carried three, nothing. We're on to Block Party Request. It's the season for block parties and car washes, I guess. Block Party Request. This is from Pine Street. Submitting an annual request to hold a block party on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, from seven, I'm sorry, 11:00 AM until 9:00 PM, with the Pine Street entrance and side street to the Old Ham School closed. Pleasure of the board?
Question to approve?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carried three, nothing. We now go on to 4.12. This is a road race request. Cedar Samaritan Care. Submitting a request to hold a road race on Sunday, August the 25th, 2024, from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The race will begin at Norwood High School, followed along Nickel Street to Westover Parkway, Arbor Mall Road, and to the end, the high school. Approximately 100 to 200 participants are expected. Pleasure of the board for the road race.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carried three, nothing. Onward to the four, to item 4.13. This is a car wash request from Norwood High School Student Council. They are submitting a request to hold a car wash on Saturday, September the 14th, from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM at the municipal parking lot.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carried three, nothing. We also have, all right, and now we have 4.14. This is Cemetery Deeds. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Three, nothing, carried for signature. 4.15 is MassDOT Notice of Award. This, this is a notification of grant acceptance by MassDOT for Norwood Memorial Airport. As is typical with grants received from MassDOT, there is a notice that's submitted to the Board of Selectmen for our signature, and it also outlines the various terms of the grant agreement. These grant agreements, as is described to in the memorandum letter to Chair Sheehan of the Commission, are pretty much the typical grant insurance language that MassDOT provides in Norwood with for our review and signature. Could I have a motion on this?
Motion for the Chair to proceed with signing on behalf of the board. Second.
Very good. Any questions on this? Pretty self-explanatory. Very good. It's been moved and seconded, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And that carried three, nothing as well. So we have a late item for our review. This is item 4.16. This is the Norwood Varsity Golf Team. They are submitting a request for a car wash, a car wash, on July 13th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the municipal parking lot. Again, this is a later, later gender item from the Norwood Varsity Golf Team.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That carried three, nothing as well. That takes us through new business. We still have a couple of minutes before our 7 o'clock appointment.
Can we do memorandum?
Let us do memorandum. So we have a memorandum this evening. A memorandum for, from Comcast, 5.1 from Comcast, for information about programming changes. 5.2 is Verizon, for information, programming changes. 5.3, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, for information, Commonwealth search for leased space. So those are the three items that are, that you park the board as its... Are any questions about the memorandum? If not, could I have a...
Motion to approve.
Get them all done.
Motion to file?
Second.
All right. Mr. Sad has made a motion to file memorandum, and Ms. Grow is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And that carried three, nothing. Probably the fastest we've gone through an agenda in some time.
That's the way it should be.
So at this point, we have a couple of minutes yet for the 7 o'clock hearing. With that, if, what's, would the, would the board be amenable to just perhaps getting through a little bit of our manager and selectmen agenda item now, or?
Sure.
Why don't we start with Mr., I think, Mr. Rosen, why don't we start with you, and that should bring us probably up to 7 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Let's see if I can get it done within four minutes before our next hearing. So it's a pleasure to sit in for Mr. Mizuko on a night like tonight where things are moving very quickly. I just had a couple of updates for the board to think over. One was I just wanted to give kudos to everyone who was involved with putting the July 4th parade on this year. That includes the volunteers, the staff, the bands, the acts, the general public that attended, the road racers that raced, and special thanks to our grand marshal, retired Police Chief Bill Brooks. I've heard very good things about the day. We had a little bit of a sprinkle of rain right around 5:30, but otherwise it went off without a hitch. And we look forward to preparing, starting our preparations for 2025 in January. To, we usually do six months. I'm on the parade committee, so we do about a six-month planning process, so we go over all, all the possible variables, and that's what puts on a good show for everybody. So I hope everyone enjoys July 4th this year. Talking about summertime fun, we also have our concert series is in full swing. We started off on Sunday with our first, the Compact Big Band came at 6:30 and had their first show. Then we also, Monday night, we had our first Carillon concert. And tomorrow night, Wednesday, we have our first Summer Fest Wednesday night concert, also at 6:30 on the Town Common. And we do have one final acoustic Thursday. It's an encore show this Thursday, 6:30. Fiona Campbell, who played a few weeks ago, is coming back for an encore show. So come on down to the Common on the Green, 6:30 to 8:30. Fiona will be there. And last thing I just want to mention to the board is that our capital budget process is now in full swing. For those who might not know, right after the operating budget process ends in May and with town meeting, we usually take about a week off, and then June 1st, we start the capital budget process. So we've had three staff capital meetings, and the Capital Outlay Committee is convening for the first time since March next week. We will have a Monday night meeting. Agenda to be posted later this week. And that's all the updates I had. We're looking forward to a lot of fun summertime activities here in Norwood.
Great. And just one note on the Capital Outlay. I just wanted to thank Sarah Sullivan for her serving as a moderator appointee to the Capital Outlay Committee. And Sarah has, has recently requested to come off of Capital Outlay, and Moderator Slater has recruited and met with various people who have expressed an interest in serving an outlay, and I'm pleased to announce that Moderator Slater has appointed Mr. David Tuttle as the newest member of the Outlay Committee. So, and those of us who know and work with Dave know that he will be a very good addition to our committee. So thank you, Mr. Rosen. So with that, I'm going to invite, we have, we have a 7:00 PM public hearing. Come on in. How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
Just...
Yeah, right there. That's fine. So we have the materials. This evening, we have a public hearing, and I think we start, as we usually do at a public hearing, with Ms. Woodward, who will read the public notice, and then we'll do the introduction, and you can tell us about your request for this evening. Ms. Woodward?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be conducted by the Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, upon the following petition of National Grid, to install approximately 50 feet of two-inch plastic main extending from the existing to install approximately 50 feet of two-inch plastic main extending from the existing two-inch plastic main in Moore Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. This meeting will be conducted in the Selectmen's Chambers, Room 34, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts.
So good evening. We know who you are, but why don't you introduce yourself again for the benefit of the audience?
Okay, hi, my name is Mary Mulroney, and I'm here representing National Grid, requesting a grant allocation for the installation of approximately 50 feet of two-inch plastic main extending from the existing two-inch plastic main in Moore Street in Norwood.
Thank you. And Ms. Woodward, it appears that all the applicant details are, I see we have the butter notification in the, in the map, are there? At this point, any questions from the board regarding the, Mr. Sad?
Just one, I have a question. It's kind of confusing on our front where that bend is, is that prior to the bridge, the river bridge?
Where is this 50 feet going?
Oh, it's just, it's coming up Moore's and then going into 100 and 100A, the buildings, so we just have to.
Oh, that's up top?
Yeah, it's up by Subaru.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was down lower. I'm just thinking, because they just tied that street over. I'm like, oh, okay. So that's fine. I have no further questions, Mrs. Chairman.
Good. Ms. Gro.
Is this for the purpose of maintaining what's there or expanding service?
It's to maintain what's there. They already have one, but just to make sure that everything is, they have the right capacity.
No further questions?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sad actually had the same question I had, and I pulled up the map, and I do note that the map references 101, 153 Moore Street, so that is sort of beyond Pleasant Street and going down towards Route 1.
And that'll fill in town.
Exactly, okay. I don't have any further questions, and the board doesn't seem to have questions, so I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion, well, I'm sorry, before we have to have public commentary, so before we have any motions, I'm going to just announce that this is a public hearing for this permit that is sought by National Grid. There's anybody in the public in the hallway or in this room who wishes to comment on this request, please do so. Mr. Sullivan?
Jeff Sullivan, this is a gas main?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance who would wish to comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please say aye. Aye? That's three, nothing, carry. We now move to the review and approval of the, of the request. Do I have a motion to approve?
On the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have one question for you. I happened to be golfing with a guy last week, Franny O'Leary. He says hello.
Thank you.
If I can make a motion, we approve it.
Mr. Sad has made a motion to approve the permit sought, the petition from National Grid. Ms. Gro, will you second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that closes, that passes, carries three, nothing as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Do you have a card on you?
I do.
Give it to Mike, and I'll get it from Mike. Thank you. Have a great summer.
Try to stay cool. Well, we have certainly been very efficient this evening. We are now on our last item. Mr. Rosen started with the manager's update. Now we can proceed to addenda items from our select board, and I'll start, I'm going to reverse here, I'm going to start with Ms. Gro this evening.
Perfect.
You can think about what you want to say.
Oh, I got plenty.
Ms. Gro.
Well, I just wanted to continue the, the line of conversation from the assistant general manager earlier, just to thank him and the entire committee for all their work on the Fourth of July parade. I know there was a lot of challenges this year between the staging area and multiple places being under construction, the rain, you know, we've had, you know, new chiefs coming in, like, there were so many different factors, but everything went swimmingly, and everybody had a great time. I had a great time, so we just really appreciated all that hard work. Thank you very much for that. And then I also want to just put out, we, it was mentioned earlier by NCM, but I also would like to re-mention it, which is for folks to remember that the farmer's market is in full swing this season. So that's every Tuesday, it's down on the common. We've had a lot of really good vendors, there's some new ones there this year, in addition to fun activities, and it's just really great to see everybody come out and get, you know, fresh local produce and meats, and it's really awesome, and definitely come down and use it. It's a more sustainable way to, to do your groceries. And that's it for me tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Gro. Mr. Sad?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things. Mr. Assistant Manager, I've been getting a lot of calls from people in South Node with different languages.
Okay.
If we could put a sign up down there that, they think it's going to open soon.
Oh, for the haws?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody had just bought a pass, and they told me a month ago it was on the wrong website, and they bought it. And just different languages, a couple of signs, pool will be closing until next season.
Okay.
And then, it's a couple of dead trees, if we can get these, I guess, top of the list, 1249 Washington Street, and then in front of Kitty's Pest Control, they're dead, and they're just going to, maybe fall on some young kid there or somebody walking a dog or a cat, and they'll fall down on it. And then there's a pothole in front of the, Bob's probably hit it 15 times today, in front of the junior high, that Cookley School, by Bob Ivets's house. They just put a main in there, but it's like a foot pothole. Eight inch, six inches, a metal, what do they call them? Just a sewer cover. Second thing is, I want to thank this young lady last, during the parade last week, she pulled me over at the parade and made a little bracelet for me, and I want to thank Sabrina Sansone, and next year you're going to walk with me. So thank you for that. And one more thing, we do have a 100th, 100th birthday for Henry Scanzio. So he, his birthday was on July 4th, World War II veteran, 82nd Airborne, big party for him on the 13th, and he was the head salesman of the Bach Clan Auto Sales, and he was involved with the BACHs for a long time, related to them through the Frazes. So happy birthday to Henry and the entire family, and then in closing, wish Bill and Matt best of luck, and wherever they are on their vacation and their time away, and it's, you can have your seat back built. I love it. All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. So Mr. Rosen, you, you did announce tomorrow is our first concert of the Summerfest series, starting at 6:30. The show features Roundhouse Band. Roundhouse Band is a Norwood-based band. We have several members of Norwood High School who are part of that band, including our veterans' agent Teddy Movahill, so that's a 6:30 p.m. Always a nice band, a nice way to open the season. And we've been getting a lot of questions from the concert committee regarding the status of the Castle Island Beer Garden, so they were approved this evening, so we will see them, them there on the concert site on the dates that they put in for their requests, so that's, that's a great summer event as well. So we are meeting next as a board on July the 23rd, and in August, I think, Mr. Rosen, I'm pretty sure we've, we've determined that for the time being, subject to change, we'll have one meeting in August.
August 13th.
August the 13th. Very good. And the only other note I have is, so behind me, people will note that we have the, this Board of Selectmen members who have served in, on the board since 1872, and since Ms. Gro and I were elected a couple of years ago, we've, we've often noticed that the board is running out of room, and there have been three new members elected since that time. And I'm just very pleased that, from the town manager's office, John C. Jorello has met with me, and he's going to look at some options for us to update the board. We have some selectmen who have, the detail of which needs to be updated, and we need to figure out how best to perhaps make more room in the board. It's quite a pretty board, it's quite lovely, and we want to be very careful in doing that, but I do want to reach out and thank the town manager's office for taking a look at that, and hopefully over time we'll, we'll see an update to the board. That's it for me. Any other comments, questions from the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Please say aye.
Aye.
That's a three, nothing vote, carry. Good evening, everyone. Stay cool.